Do you want the printed version?
Are we recording?
We're recording.
Very good, okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Montclair Planning Board. Notice of this meeting is given in accordance with the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act by posting a copy of the notice on the first floor of this building, and also by sending a copy to the newspaper designated by the Township for electronic notice, and also posting a copy on the township website. This meeting is being broadcast live on Channel 34 and is streamed live and will be available on demand on YouTube. This will be a quasi judicial proceeding, meaning that the board has powers and procedures that resemble a court of law, and we are obligated to determine facts and draw conclusions from them in order to provide the basis for official action. Any questions or comments must be limited to those issues that the board can legally consider in reaching a decision, and the quorum appropriate for a judicial hearing should be maintained at all times. First thing on our agenda this evening is our roll call.
Vice Chair Brodak.
I'm here.
Mr. Graham's excused. Mr. Ian Wally.
Here.
Ms. Lockman.
Here.
Mr. Ortiz. Mr. Pierre.
Present.
Ms. Willis.
Present.
Mr. Chair Nguyen.
Here.
Mr. Jacobson.
Here.
And Mr. Niemann.
Here.
All right. And next on our agenda are the minutes from our last meeting.
It's April 24th.
Twenty-fourth.
Are there any changes to the minutes?
I will move their approval since I was here.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Staying.
And the minutes from May 8th are nonexistent. Right.
Yeah. Non-existent, right.
But since they're on the agenda, I just thought I would mention.
That was a carryover, yeah.
And we have resolutions. I understand that we've been asked to carry the one on Grove Street.
Yes. I spoke today with, I spoke today with Mr. Skolnick, and he has again requested that the resolution be carried. He has indicated to me that next week should be something of a, something of a turn of events, and something will happen, and that something will be either that they will get some approval from TNJ for an easement, or not, or he is considering they are working now on plans for what he called a safety plan. In the event they are unable to get the, the actual easement or anything other than a revocable license from TNJ, they would, I think they would come back to, before you, with a so-called safety plan.
Otherwise known as Plan B.
Plan B. Definitely Plan B.
Okay.
I just, oh, sorry.
Does it create any difficulty if we carry?
It doesn't. They consent to any time, there's no time limit, but they consent no matter what.
New point. I just was wondering if we're going to add the discussion of the indemnification provision to the agenda?
Yeah, we can, we can discuss that. And there's something else that I wanted to discuss also. And so we'll tack them on to the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Our resolution on 150 Court Fine Street.
I haven't rece, I had not received any comments or changes to the resolution. Is there a motion? Unless there's any, anybody has some changes. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? You weren't at the meeting.
I wasn't at that meeting, yes.
Yeah, so you would be abstained, you would abstain. I, I have the list of people who weren't there.
I'm also abstaining, yep.
Yeah, but clearly you guys are falling down on the job. I mean, normally I get these changes from.
Just because, yes.
Okay, listen. I'm happy as a, well, I'm happy.
All right. And so that brings us to our committee report section and discussion on the master plan reexamination report.
Correct. So, let me get my documents out here. We had, we've had two committee meetings so far, and they've been actually very, they almost, they functioned as roundtable discussions where we discussed data, discussed what everybody on the committee has seen in their experiences. And as a result of those meetings, I went back and I revised the reports. So the reports that you got today wasn't verbatim. I sent it out to the subcommittees, but it doesn't necessarily recommend their recommendations. But it, I think it's there as a guidance for the planning board to discuss. For those in the audience here, and anybody who's listening, we are working on the master plan reexamination report, focusing on the unified land use and circulation plan. And I think the way we're starting it is looking at all of the different regional strategies, issues and strategies at the, at the beginning of the plan. The second section of the, of the unified land use plan are the area-specific strategies. And once we get through the overall strategies, we will then move into the area-specific, which is different neighborhoods, different business districts. So the two subcommittees that have met so far include the Land Use and Parking Subcommittee, which was, let's see, Carmel, Keith, and Tony, and the Flexible Affordable Urban Suburban Lifestyle Subcommittee, which is a long way of saying housing. And that was Kevin, Kevin, Carmel, and Jake. So we can start off with the Land Use and Parking Subcommittee, who met on May 9th. And the way my, the report that you have is formatted is the first section summarizes the specific issues that the unified plan lists for this category. So one, two, three. It's three issues that relate to land use and parking. The rest of it, of that section of the plan, if you remember, there's a lot of recommendations. So we talked, we had one meeting. We talked about, a little bit about those recommendations. And I think it's, we really want to get the, the planning board's full thoughts on that. So number one, the number one issue under land use and parking.
Sorry. I was just wondering, I thought that it might be beneficial to look at the first section of the master plan, which gives the objectives and the goals and the strategies, rather than delving into the body of the master plan. Because I'm not sure, do we all agree that those goals and objectives haven't changed? And if they've, if we have opinions about what they should be, shouldn't that be the driver for what goes in in the body of the plan? I think I, you know, I sent around an email to everybody today giving my perception that maybe that's what we should be talking about. Especially as I think the, what kind of triggered this was a discussion of the amendment to the plan because of the environmental element. We had started talking about the sustainability element, and it was, you know, I remember distinctly Mike Graham saying, "Oh, we can't, we cannot, we have to first discuss the objectives and goals of the master plan before we can incorporate that into the environmental sustainability element." So I'm wondering, should we not have a discussion about that first? And then go into the subcommittees? I, it's just, that would be how I would do it, yeah.
We do need to go through the goals and objectives, but I really thought we needed facts first.
Yeah.
And, and part of the evaluation of the strategies, the issues that were identified specifically for each of these categories in 2014, well, 2010, it was adopted in 2014, I thought it'd be very helpful to discuss the issues and the recommendations that were in the prev, in the plan originally, and the facts that are added for each of those categories. Once we've had that discussion, then we can identify, once you have the factual background, then I think maybe you can, can approach the goals and objectives then. Because you'll have data, and you might want to change your objectives once you have the factual background. That was, and I'm not ready to talk about it tonight, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep, and my other.
If, if the board wants to start off with goals and objectives and skip the, the background information, we can certainly do that. But it was, I really felt that there's data that's needed for you to absorb. And then when you look at the objectives and the goals, then you'll have the knowledge to determine, you know, is that really the, what we want to achieve, the direction we want to go in?
It's just a different approach. I think I would start out with what our goals and objectives are, and then work on the details to get us there. But, you know, whatever. And my second.
You know what? I'll let the, you can have, that's why we're here. If you, if the board, whatever direction you want to go in. My, again, I wanted to introduce, there was a lot of data that I gave you before. And it kind of, we never had a chance to discuss it. So the, the opportunity to discuss the data is when we talk about the issues, which is why I'm breaking it up into these issue-based discussions. When we, when we've done that, and you have the background information, I think then you'll be able, my, my recommendation is then you'll be able to appropriately evaluate the objectives. I mean, I think that, and the goals.
Yeah.
I would agree with that approach, only because if you, I mean, it's hard to object to the objectives of the master plan because they're so, it's hard to object, in my, in my opinion. I'm not prepared to do it because I hadn't really thought about it before tonight. But I would, I would like to participate in the future. But the objectives are so broad, it's hard to disagree with them. Because they're, they're all great.
And they often conflict, too.
I think it comes down to, can we realistically do it in five to 10 years? And that's where some of the more granular objectives, where, yeah, we can actually do that. It may not get us there entirely, but we could kind of chip off a little bit and accomplish that. So I, I think taking the, you know, that the committee approach on the separate issues is, is good. And I would agree to have a discussion about the objectives. You know, like, create a symbiotic relationship between MSU and Montclair. That's an objective. Okay. Where do we go with that?
Yeah, yeah.
You don't want to say no. I mean, so, you know, stuff like that.
I think one of the things that I'm finding as I go through the unified plan is it's very, very long-winded. And sometimes it says the same thing in three different ways. So I think we can condense a lot of it. And if you condense it, then it's much easier to manage.
Yeah, it's really hard to manage. I would agree with that 100%. It's like, you don't know what's going on here.
And I think there's value in kind of the working from the bottom up here because this starts as like a reexamination report, right? And reexamining, I think, means we want to look back at the specifics. And then, once we have those specifics kind of squared away, we can look there, and then we're able to draw from there what our themes are, and what our desires are. And, yeah, so I think it makes sense, starting as a reexamination, to start with the granular, the factual, and work up from there.
And then you can make an informed decision as to how to reword those objectives. Clearly, we need to do it.
Yeah, I guess that's my point. At some point, we have to look at the first, the section number 1.0
Right.
and change it.
Right.
Because a lot of that, in my view, doesn't apply, or it's, as you said, it's redundant, blah, blah, blah.
Think of it this way, thinking of it saving the best for last.
And I think also, this, this is a long process. I mean, I don't feel like, as a member of those two committees, that we've really done enough work on that yet. I mean, I don't know how my other committee members feel, but.
Well, I think that the purpose is to kickstart the analysis because clearly there's nine members here who all have different opinions, so.
Yes.
So, you know, I, I, I think, I didn't, I also don't want to have meeting fatigue. You, some of you are on multiple subcommittee meetings. And I was feeling, another meeting, another meeting? I'm like, well, I think we can get so far, and then we'll bring it to the board. Have a, hopefully we'll have a robust discussion tonight on these issues, if we get to it. And, and then we can, then we, this is not going to happen overnight.
Right.
In my mind, we're going to spend the rest of this year having these real. And I thought the subcommittee discussions were enlightening. I really, maybe it's the planner in me. I really enjoyed the discussions that we had. And got a lot of positive feedback, feedback from the committees. And I think we can continue to do that as we go through these reports.
Okay, but just noted, at some point, we'll look at section one and make all the changes that we desire.
It's not my, we will, we will get to that. But I just want to have the, the, the background information from the board members before we tackle the goals and objectives. Because honestly, I think those are critical.
And let me ask you one more question. How does the public get involved in this discussion?
Well, for this, for the public, I posted, I've told them, I would post it on the agenda, and I would post all the reports, so they've had access to all the reports. From, I, I know there's cer, like, I know the Housing Commission isn't, wants to be involved.
Actually, Janice, I meant the, I meant the general public.
I, I'm answering your question.
But, I mean, is there public comment? Maybe I should just ask that.
Oh, that's, that's at the decision of the, of the chair, if he wants to invite public comment. I know the public is, is following. And that's why, as I've said, I've posted everything on the, on the, on the agenda. We have a webpage on the reexamination report where all the information is posted. And that's the best we can do right now. Because I'm just trying to get the, get my reports and my analysis to the subcommittees, get the subcommittees to review the reports, get that information posted on the webpage, schedule these meetings at the, these are, this is like a workshop meeting. And it's your call how you want to bring the public. But they are aware of what's being discussed. And I've told the bid when we discussed, the Montclair Center, that we would most likely bring them to the subcommittee meeting and have them very intimately involved.
But we have to kind of.
Get going first.
Right, and we have to kind, we have to decide how we're going to structure the public comment. Because if we take public comment on everything that we do, we will never finish. So I think that's going to be kind of a, a, a figure out as we go what's appropriate as we dig into these things. You know, historically, if we're not doing a hearing, we haven't generally taken public comment on a lot of things just because it's very time-consuming. And sometimes it's helpful, sometimes it's not. We want to make sure that we structure it in a way that it's going to be most helpful. And I think, in order for, at least off the top of my head, my first gut feeling is that in order for it to be very helpful, we need to understand things. You know, we have people on this board who have not had exposure to everything that's in this master plan. And the public needs to understand what's going on, too, you know, before we start inviting discussion and exchange with the public. I mean, I agree that we need to, we need to be transparent, and we do need to get the public's input. There's a lot of different ways that we will get that. And at the end of the day, I think, you know, we can, we can have it as a board decision, as opposed to the chair's decision about how we do it. I think we can have the board's decision as to when it becomes appropriate and what point it's going to take.
And written comments can always be sent to me to be incorporated as we go through this process.
Yeah, I think making clear that public comment extends beyond the meetings and one night a week. Even if this, just setting up an email account that goes to your office to just work through and say, you know, we received this note. Because that allows someone to submit their comment at 2:00 in the morning when they're, you know, putting a baby back to sleep, rather than having to show up at a meeting that may happen only once.
All right, so.
Okay, if you're ready to start with Land Use and Parking, and the Land Use and Parking Subcommittee.
I just have one more question. I had sent some comments to the, to, with respect to this initial draft. And I'm wondering if that's what we're going to be looking at now, or do I need to restate the comments as the issues come up?
I think you sent your, honestly.
I sent them late, yeah.
Carmel, I didn't get your comments until this weekend.
Yeah, that's right, I know. Well, right.
So I'm working off of your version. You're a member of the Subcommittee, so I've got your comments here.
Oh, okay, thank you.
So, number one, the Land Use and Parking section of the unified plan starts off with the number one issue being, "Montclair's zoning code typically sets maximum height and density and minimum front, side, and rear setbacks. However, the code is generally silent on important issues related to the location of parking lots, ground floor transparency, where buildings front and open onto, appropriate sidewalk widths, and important architectural elements, among others." I act, I think most of that statement is incorrect. And in fact, we talked about it. We have different sections of the zoning ordinance that address all of those items, with the exception of sidewalk width. And that's something that I think remains valid, and we probably need to take another look at how our sidewalks are, are designed. I don't know if there's any, we have, in case you don't know, we have a requirement that parking is prohibited between the building line and the street. Parking must be hidden from the street view by buildings or landscaping. We require that a minimum of 60% of the street-facing facade of commercial buildings be transparent glass. We require that building entrances be oriented to the public street for both commercial and residential buildings. Require, general, we have general requirements for architectural elements in our site plan. We have a lot more detail for architectural elements in our historic, historic districts under the auspices of our Historic Preservation Commission, who does an excellent job implementing their design requirements. We also have a lot more design standards and redevelopment plans because the redevelopment process gives us that ability to basically tailor design standards to those specific projects. So I think we do meet, I, I don't think number one's an issue anymore. And that was, I think, the conclusion of the Subcommittee as well.
Sorry. That, is one directed at Montclair generally, or any specific area specifically?
It's all, it's Montclair.
So for, there's a couple of, a handful of houses down in the South End that have like, they're just driveway with a garage, garage right in front, between the street and the building line. Is that exempted from the, that zoning regulation?
It probably predated that zoning requirement.
Okay, thank you.
I'm wondering if there's, you know, I, I hear what you say, and I don't disagree that, that we have addressed a number, many of those issues, most of them, in the ordinance. But could they be improved upon? And that's, maybe that's the, the issue with them, is that what we have isn't good enough. Because, you know, as we hear applications, we run into issues about trying to figure out exactly where things are supposed to be measured from, and, and in terms of, of, you know, setbacks from the street when we do subdivisions, and, you know, it's, there are issues that arise during hearings that touch on some of those things. And maybe there's room for improvement. And, and that's the kind of thing that, you know, perhaps, instead of saying that it's, you know, not something that we need to consider, we need to look at it and say, hey, can we make it better? Just because we have something in place, is this the best thing? Has this worked?
Right. I think we, we probably need to rephrase that issue. I think that we are, I, I would characterize our regulations as being very proactive when it comes to design. I'm not saying it can't be improved, but I do think we have a lot of, a lot of requirements and a lot of hoops for applicants to jump through. So I think the focus should be on, and the problem with design is, and zoning in general, is you have to be specific. You can't be general.
Right.
Okay, so that's why, if, if there's something that's missing, we need to specify that so that we can, we can address it.
Right, and, and that's what, that's what I'm thinking about in terms of, you know, just looking at, looking at past applications over the past, what, 10 years? And where have our one-size-fits-all
Right.
regulation failed us?
Right.
Or caused a problem? And, and then maybe putting something specific in place just to deal with that.
Right.
Just to deal with that problem.
Well, one of the things that came out of this Subcommittee discussion was our ordinance, this, the, the master plan talks about the street wall, and I think it's elsewhere in the memo here, maintaining the street wall and the consistent facades in our business districts. Most of these, this is, Land Use and Parking is really about our business districts. However, we were talking, but that doesn't necessarily mean, because everything has the same front yard setback, is boring. And there's, and we're not, and we don't want it to all to look the same. And maybe the issue isn't making, keeping it all the same, but allowing a little bit more flexibility, flexibility. And how, and this is one of the, and I know it's, I think it's later in the report, is actually reintroducing a front yard setback. Right now, it's zero. So what if we say, okay, no, it would be really nice to have some open space, some additional sidewalk in, in the front. So if you're putting in a new building, instead of being a zero front yard setback, why don't we make it five feet? And have that five feet be an extension of the sidewalk so we have some usable open space between the building and the street? It's not enough to put a parking space in, but it's enough to create some visual interest. Another thing that we talked about in the Subcommittee is, you know what's really nice about Montclair are the alleys in our, in our business districts that provide interesting areas. If you're walking through them, through our business districts, it's, it's easy to get to the parking in the back, but it also lends interest to our commercial districts. And usually, that's where the bid can put, puts their exciting art on some of those alleys, because they, they're, they're public viewpoints. And usually, they're pretty bland building walls. So maybe we should celebrate the alley. And, and how do we integrate that into our, into our ordinances, a requirement? So when I say these meetings, we don't have the answer, but it generated a lot of ideas. So maybe if we go through this, I don't think, I, I think the number one issue that's written here was very static. I think we could, it can be reworded, that we need to bring, maintain the character and the vibrancy, and I don't, and I don't think just keeping everything cookie-cutter is, is what Montclair is. So that was just what we talked about as a committee. And so as we go through this, maybe you'll come up with some ideas as well. It opens up, think about Montclair Center, think about Wauchung, all of our business districts, which are each wonderful places. What makes them interesting to you?
The whole, whole idea of improvement is something that isn't just specific to that first.
Right.
I think it applies across the board. And I think we see, again, we see, in the course of doing our, our regular planning board business, we see where there's, there are holes, where there's inadequacies, or there's insufficiencies. And we, during this process, you know, part of the process should be, yeah, even though we, you know, hey, we've kind of met that goal, if we, if we think we've met the goal, we should, we shouldn't just leave it at that. We should think beyond that and say, okay, did we meet that goal the best way that we could? Or is there a better way? Is there maybe a better way to do it now? That we see today that we didn't see, you know, yesterday?
Right.
So it's just, I'm just throwing it out there. I won't harp on it or bring it up, you know, as, as, but I'd like you to keep, I'd like you to keep that kind of in the back of your mind as.
I guess, I guess what I'm saying is, this is how the issue was phrased in 2010, 2014. I don't think that's quite the issue.
Yeah. The issue has, issue has, has, has morphed.
I, I, right, I think we need to.
We met some, we met some achievements. We met some goals.
Right, right. We need to change it a little bit. And I think part of that. Right, right, we need to change it a little bit, and I think part of that is, if we can, to help me in guiding the recommendations, what is it that, that, that we want to, want to, we've got setbacks, we've got step backs. You know, I, I, I thought the idea of moving the buildings back a little bit off the sidewalk was a good idea, but whatever, other suggestions as we go through this would certainly help, okay? I know that, I've heard issues about Seymour, the Wellmott Plaza, that it's too cold, there's not enough landscaping there, it needs, it wasn't softened enough. We have landscaping requirements, but we don't really, basically, the only landscaping requirements we have in the bid is street trees. Is that something we need to think about a little bit more? You know, I don't want people thinking Montclair's, or downtown, our business districts are cold, because there's, it's mostly pavement. So, I don't know if anybody has any other suggestions as to that, or just think about this as we go through the process.
I guess my just general feeling, kind of, it goes to an issue with zoning, kind of, as a concept, which is, if we were to amend to say, make it a five-foot setback, right? That's just, that's still another kind of imposed rule, it's just a different imposed rule, right? So, yes, it may provide some more space in some circumstances for greater flexibility with that streetscape, but it's also imposing a different rule than the one before. It's not necessarily saying that that new streetscape will be well utilized and beneficial to the community.
Right.
So just something to kind of keep in mind with zoning being a kind of blunt object, rather than, in many circumstances, a, a more scalpel-like tool.
So, moving on
I don't say this enough, I agree. You've heard of the term malicious compliance? Is that something that we want to avoid, too? Yeah.
So Janice, I have just something to think about. So the opening of the master plan talks about that the zoning modifications proposed in this document are designed to impact zones and districts bordering train stations and within the downtown commercial areas of township. They're not intended to change the regulations with respect to, you know, that goes through the residential zones. This document does not specify any changes to the land uses, bulk requirements, or density of residential zones. Is that really true?
It does not, we did, are you, you're not talking about this particular section?
No, I'm talking about the opening, which
Okay. They did not focus on the residential zones, because the approach was, it was to preserve the residential areas and keep them as they are, and focus the change and the growth to the business districts.
But haven't we seen that, you know, residential people come up with applications and cite the master plan as like, why they can do certain things, or not do them, or whatever? It's not just the commercial districts or commercial applicants that reference this document.
I think what you can, implicit in the existing land use plan is, keep the residential areas as it is.
But what's a residential area? Just all these, I mean
The residential
Those districts, the Rs that you're mentioning here.
Yes, that, right.
And even though people, even though applicants may cite certain objectives of the master plan, it doesn't mean that they're citing them correctly.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Exactly.
You know, we make a statement with respect to the commercial areas, and they try and transpose it onto a residential.
Right.
But, you know, you've got this countervailing statement that's saying that we're trying to keep the residential areas intact, pretty much as they are. So, well, they conveniently forget about that.
Yeah, okay, no, I just was pointing it out, because, just to be sure that we're all on the same page here.
One of the recommendations that may come out of this process is that we need to take, and I think based on the other subcommittee, the flexible
Affordable, whatever we are.
Yeah.
Housing.
I think we might need to
Urban.
Expand the evaluation of our residential districts. I think that was one of the
We did, we said something like that.
So we're going to get there, which is not there yet.
Okay, no, no, I'm just thinking, as we're making, thinking about making changes, that might be something you want to note, that this opening statement in section 1.0 introduction may not be true anymore, right? That's all.
And I think that's probably what, will, that may be, very well be where we end up.
Yeah, okay.
Staying with land use and parking, issue number two, I think says the same thing almost as issue number one. Many residents have expressed concern that recent development has not provided the architectural and site amenities that are commonly, that the community envisioned, although there are myriad factors which influence amenity decisions. Zoning plays an important role, although existing zoning does provide some bulk and use standard, is weak on the design details that are important for establishing area character and creating place. I think it's just saying basically the same thing as, as the first one, and I think we could kind of consolidate into one reworded issue. Issue number three, in many areas, private sector building additions and renovations are constrained by parking requirements that do not sufficiently provide a full menu of modal choices for residents and visitors. The parking ratios currently used by the township are generally used for suburban, suburban areas with minimal transit services and heavily segregated land uses, two conditions not found in many areas of Montclair. Furthermore, there are no provisions to allow for shared parking for mixed-use buildings, development, or districts. So, yes, it's true, our parking standards are based on more suburban parking standards. The issue is that, and we had a debate about this, we have a lot of buildings that were built without any parking. So, I think the way it has worked in the past is this, we've created these centralized parking structures to serve, to serve a lot of buildings that don't have onsite parking, so the new buildings make up for the addition, the new, the parking that's required for their new uses by being required to provide the full allotment of parking, assuming that the, the, the park, community parking, the public parking that's available is being used for the existing buildings that don't have any parking. I know it's a convoluted way of saying it, but I think that's how we've come about this. We've tried to make it work over time. It's not scientific, but that's, that's how it's, how it's worked.
And, and do we know whether it's actually working?
I can't tell you that. We've got lots of data.
Well, no. Go ahead, John.
Tell me what you think.
Well, so, look, I, I think that the study that was done from March to April is, is useful to a point. I mean, I'm glad we have it, more data is better than less. I don't know what the building was that was studied, and I don't know that looking at one building, however big it might have been, is necessarily going to tell you enough. But I, you know, even taking this for what it is, which is, again, useful, what it shows is that on the few days a week when people are most often either going to an office or doing something else, that there, there is a, a period of hours in the middle of those days when the rates drop a little bit below the assumptions that are built into the current shared parking process. Okay, so with this one building, for those few hours on three days a week, it drops below those numbers. I don't know that that gives you enough to say that we should adopt different shared parking assumptions, because it's, it's one building and it's three days, and, you know, when we build in these assumptions, we've got to build them in for all weekdays and, you know, all business hours. And so, I, I've been, I've been kind of stewing over my friends, you know, building places for people, not cars, because I want to disagree with it, I can't completely, and so I want to use the right assumptions, and I want to, I want to change the assumptions if we can, because I'm not looking to create empty spots. I mean, it drives me up the wall every time I go to Bay Street and park there, and I see all these empty spots that could be revenue for the town and get people off the waiting list. I mean, it drives me absolutely bonkers, but by the same token, I don't want to have people come live in a building, and then they come home from work and there's no place to put their car. So, finding the right balance for that is important, because I don't want to leave empty spaces, I don't want to build parking that people don't need, but I also want to build the parking we do need. And so I don't know that, you know, that the old joke about the plural of anecdote is not data? I mean, this is, this is somewhat anecdotal, I don't know that it's enough yet to, I don't know what, I, I leave to the judgment of some others what more we should do, but, I mean, because this is very useful, but it's a building. It's not enough to tell me what's going on in Montclair at large.
And I also think things are changing. Like, I don't, I don't think we've reached some sort of static point post-COVID, right? You know, folks are now going back maybe three days a week, maybe four, maybe five now.
John's going back six days a week.
I, that's, I thought it was seven, but, yeah, we're lucky to have him here tonight. So I don't, yeah, I don't think things are changing, and so I think even if we had really great data about what's happening today, it may not be enough for us to really decide, oh, we want to change our shared parking ratios permanently, or at least we should have our thought that maybe we change them now if we agree, but they may change in six months from now as well.
Well, I just want to point out, we don't permit shared parking in our zoning ordinance. It's only in our redevelopment plans.
Right, but it becomes a, it's become a, you know, very, very active
Right.
Ever-present
Yep.
... consideration of the topic, even when, even outside of the redevelopment plans, where people are developing small properties, and we've got all these new parking structures, and we've got all these new residential structures, and I am just, personally, I'm at a loss for, for what's actually working and what's not, and I think, you know, if for nothing else, we have to prioritize getting on top of that and understanding it, so that we can have ordinances and, and a policy that, you know, is based on the actual facts of what's going on now, and how it's developing, how it's evolving, and, which means that, which really means, you know, at the end of the day, that time and money is going to have to be focused on parking, for, for a ongoing evaluation of it for a period of time, until we become comfortable that it's kind of settled in one fashion or another.
So here's my thought. Ongoing evaluation of parking. I get lots of data. I get, I get lots of data from some of the different mixed-use projects. Perhaps we should engage our parking consultant, who, who understands how shared parking works, to evaluate this, you know, on a quarterly basis or an annual basis, and report back to, to the planning board. Set aside money, so he can get the data from the, from the applicants, the developers, and from the parking, our, our parking utility.
Taking it one step further, have the examination of the data to determine whether or not what we're getting is actually useful.
Well, that would be part of it, yeah.
Because maybe, maybe there's a different kind of data
Exactly.
That we need, you know, and they could be, you know, reoriented to, to have that be.
So moving forward
But definitely have a focus.
Moving forward, forward, we could request to have a li, a, a part of our budget go towards having this ongoing parking analysis, that would be paid through township funds, because it would, it would basically develop our information for you to evaluate planning policies and make recommendations to the council.
Because I still hear
Because to get a parking utility, I mean
Yeah.
It shouldn't, it should be no cost to get the data from the parking utility, you think they would probably have that?
Although their incuriosity about it is, is a little problematic.
They may have it, but their ability to come and prepare a report and report to you, it's not there.
Even though it's their, even though it's their business, and they ought to be thinking about how to, how to improve revenue, but they don't, I know, it's
Well, they have a vendor that
I think it's better if we have a separate person who can take the information.
Okay.
If you can read between the lines, take the information, get it, and report it to you, rather than relying on the person who's implementing it.
Yeah, do they have one vendor that collects the money? And, I know that
I think they have a vendor who operates the decks, or
Yeah.
Possibly more, but they have outside vendors who operate the decks themselves.
They have a new one, it was Pro Park.
Pro Park.
Yeah.
I, so, I agree with a lot of what has been said. I think where that leads us to land may be different, but I think the problem with hoping for this time at which things will return to normal is that we're, for better or for worse, living in a dynamic community at a very dynamic time, and there's no foreseeable future, and with that, in which that's going to stop, right? And so, to say that at this moment in time, we have reached a point of stasis, that we are comfortable with saying this amount of data is the right amount to determine for the next X period of time, is I don't think necessarily something we can use as our, our kind of guidepost. I think it's really important to consider that supply and demand kind of works both ways, and that when you build parking, people bring cars, and when you, people bring cars, you need parking. And so, I totally understand, and am sympathetic to the concern about needing a place to park your car when you, you go to your building, but there are plenty of people, as illustrated in one of the reports that Janice has sent, who don't own cars in Montclair. And so we don't need to build parking for them in every circumstance to begin with, and we don't need to necessarily build parking for people who may otherwise take other means to get to that place. You're always going to need parking for any number of reasons, whether that's safety, accessibility, or just general, you want someone to come from a place that doesn't have a bus line or a train line. But you can build too much parking, and too much parking can cause harms. It can deaden streetscapes, it can make buildings hard to rent, because the maintenance is incredible, and they're very expensive to build, especially as we want to and should build them in Montclair, in structured areas, so we don't just have acres of asphalt, which no one appreciates. So I think we need to be careful with that. I think putting real resources behind gathering data would be helpful, because, you know, it looks like parking is very difficult, because every street spot is filled, but changing how the township, to Jeff's point about the incuriosity of the township and kind of how its parking works from a monetarist perspective, I think taking a harder look at that and charging more for the most desirable types of parking would have a big impact on getting people to go to the structured parking, which frees up spots and makes everyone feel better about the parking situation, because even, whether there's spots or not, right, people don't feel like there are spots, and, and that's a problem as much as anything. And, and so, yeah, those are my two cents, and my humble suggestion is if we're concerned about building the right amount of parking, we just pause for a bit and hold off on the parking for a while. That was supposed to be a joke, but it didn't land, I apologize.
The, I think the most important thing said was Janice's statement, that this is not in the plan per se, it's not in the zoning ordinance, it's something that we consider in the context of a particular development. I mean, in the most recent time that we looked at this was when Lackawanna showed up, and we were talking about it a little bit, kind of tangentially, and a lot of people said a lot of really interesting things, including the developer saying, you know, who says I've got to offer everybody a spot? You know, I would love to offer fewer spots, because I love to build less parking, and that's kind of, I think, still kicking around. So, I, I agree 100% with the, if you build it, they will come philosophy, that if, if you, if you build a development with the expectation people are going to have cars, people who will move into it are people with cars, and if you don't, people will make other arrangements. I'm, I'm all for coming up with creative compromises when there is a plan in front of us. I think all that Keith was saying, and I agreed with that, too, is that it's not static. When these things come up, we're going to have to look at the data that exists at that time, and we're going to have to look at the specifics of a particular project, all of which makes eminent sense. I was just, I started this off by just saying, that figure on the report was an interesting snapshot of a building at a moment in time that gives us more than we had yesterday, but not as much as we're going to need tomorrow. So I think we're actually all very much, we, as, as you said, and I have to be right, that, you know, we're going to disagree about a particular application that might come down the pike in future, but that's okay. Right now, philosophically, we're saying exactly the same thing about the kind of data we want, and then we may reach different conclusions about it at a particular point, but that's okay.
Okay.
Do you think that someone from the parking utility could come to a parking subcommittee meeting?
Absolutely.
That might be good, just to ask some questions, and then, if you do get a chance to speak with them, can they break out ultimately, if they can't do it now? I think it's important to know about the transient parking, which is someone just going in to buy something, you know, just day, hourly parking, and then how the long-term permits, the day and evening permits break out and get those numbers, because the more permits we have that are longer term, obviously diminishes the primary purpose of those decks, was to provide transit parking for businesses. So I think it'd be good if they could share that.
Okay, that's, absolutely, we can, I can bring the subcommittee back to meeting with them.
And then one last thing on the parking, and you guys know I feel this way. I think we made the wrong move in, well, the council changed the 1980s rule on change of use, which I think was a disaster. That went completely in the opposite direction of the old master plan. If we had a building and it went from an office to a restaurant or to residential, the whole point of that ordinance was to preserve the old buildings in, in Montclair. So if we would consider requesting that that be reversed again, this is, you know, my, my viewpoint. And I think that would, I'm not sure what people were afraid of, but these buildings have lasted for 100 years without parking. And if someone wants to improve it and do something else with it, I don't think we should tax them with a suburban parking requirement and also bring back the 15% addition that they could put on, on the building.
Yeah, I would, I would second that. I think some.
More six gates. More six gates. Never do that again.
I, I, I can't remember who told it to me, but Faux Borg, which was the highest grossing restaurant in New Jersey in 2021, wouldn't be possible under that, since that change has been introduced. So.
Yes, but then.
There's a real cost to that, that change.
But there's also six gates.
Yeah, the one, the one where they built a whole bunch of office space and don't have to do any parking for it, which is going to impose a cost on the rest of the communities. Yeah, so I mean, it's, you're both right. I mean, we, we, we did absolutely the right thing with Faux Borg, and we were stuck with six gates.
But we don't know what we're stuck with, because we could have been stuck with a dysfunctional storage building that could have sat there for a long time. Office space is really desirable at this moment. The town built lots of parking recently, the midtown deck, you know, the, the Wellmont. Lackawanna right now has an extraordinary amount of parking that's available for those tenants. And so I wouldn't conclude that six gates is, we won't know until it's built. And, but I, I think that there's way too much fear about converting a relatively small building into a nice office space. That's the type of development we want to encourage. And if it causes a little bit of, well, and also, you know, the developer is going to have to lease that office space, and presumably they know about the risks of being able to provide parking or not for their tenants, and they could bargain for their tenants in other locations where there might be suitable parking. So I would rather allow things like six gates to happen, and let's see what happens if it's really, if it's really that bad. Again, this, the ordinance has, was in place for, gosh, almost 40 years.
Yeah. I just second everything Tony said.
Okay. Now going through the recommendations in this section of the redevelopment, of the unified plan. First recommendation is very, very simply says to enact land use regulations that promote sustainable development patterns. And that sounds pretty innocuous, pretty good. But then the plan defines sustainable development.
Hang on, sorry, I just, I, I was, I know, I know you were trying to move on, I.
I'm sorry.
No, it's not, it's, it's on me. I guess I have the following reaction for whatever it's worth. Conceptually, I agree with what Tony said, because I, I'm not in the office space business, and I think if somebody is going to invest that kind of money, they're probably thinking about ways to do it the right way. If the requirement was different, we could have asked good questions of them when they came here. We could have ensured that they were doing that pencil sharpening. We could have ensured that they had really thought through how they were going to park it, where they were going to park it, and that there wasn't going to be an impact. The problem that I had with six gates was that we had to swallow it whole. We were without power to ask those questions because they didn't have any requirement, so we just had to eat it. And so although I can get where you are, and I can see us approving a building without additional parking, see Faux Borg, Zupra, for a lot of reasons, what I didn't like about it was our inability to do anything. And so that's, that's where, that's the, that's the, that's the slight disconnect here.
Yeah, so, but then, did a lot of errands, it might have to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm also.
Tony, can you turn, is your microphone on?
Maybe it's better to be off.
I want to be able to hear what you're saying.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think there's a cost to having that opportunity to, to raise our hand and ask questions. And as a downtown that's so reliant on small and mid-sized businesses, right, that wants to maintain that diversity, anytime you make someone come before this board, you're making it far more expensive to, to open and operate that business, right?
The owner of six gates can afford it.
Sure, sure.
And so I, I, because you're right, look.
He can, right, but like, there are many businesses on Bloomfield Avenue that cannot.
You, you've heard, but you've heard me say often how supportive I am personally in this board is as a group of, of making it easier for the small folks. I, I, you know, when I say no more six gates, I mean a gigantic project where we couldn't ask anything of people who could have answered the questions had we had the ability to ask them. So we're, you're, you're right, but, yeah.
It just goes back to the zoning is blunt instrument, right? And so a, a blanket rule that says for a 15% gain, you need to come before the board, it gets six gates, and it gets someone who's just trying to turn what used to be a hair salon into a fast casual restaurant.
No, and we, and we, look, I was very involved in trying to deal with compromise that the council ultimately did post-six gates to make sure that the smaller businesses weren't caught up in it. And I think the council did a, a decent job. They could have done a, they, you know, they, they could have done a lot of things. There was some dissension on the council. What else is new? But, you know, there, I, I worked with the bid, I worked with the council. We, you know, we, we tried to do that in a way that didn't mess around with the small businesses so that they didn't need to come in, you know, if a hair salon wanted to add another chair, but the six gateses of the world would. And so I, I, that's where, I think that they landed in a decent place, and I think I said then, and the council said then, that if they didn't reach the right compromise, and people ended up having to come to the planning board when we think they shouldn't have had to, we can go back to the council to change it again. But I, I, I don't apologize for trying to, trying to work with the council to get an ordinance that said for the big ones, they got to come in and they got to talk about it. So I, I don't want to go back to the days when we have to swallow big projects whole. At the same time, I want to make sure that we don't end up having a bunch of applicants here, having a cost that they shouldn't have to bear. So I, I think they, I think the council did it right when all is said and done. Not perfectly, nothing ever is, but we can fix it if, if we all of a sudden see a parade of salons. Sorry, Janice. And now.
Okay. Moving on to the recommendations in the unified plan for land use and parking. The first recommendation is to enact regulations that promote sustainable development patterns. However, the redevelopment plan defines sustainable development as increased density in activity nodes near transit stations and commercial districts. I'm not quite sure if that's how we now want to define sustainable development. There's many different ways to define sustainable development. So I think that's perhaps, while the recommendation is good, I think we need to expand on what we mean. Because I don't think sustainable, high dens, there's got to be a balance. Balanced development, I think, is, is probably the better way to put it. Sustainable development should not over, overburden our utilities, should not overburden our traffic. That's understood.
Change the basic character of the town.
It's, right, right. But we do also want to provide a variety, and, and this goes again, sustainable development is also about providing a variety of land uses, housing at a variety of price points. So it's much broader than that. So I think perhaps we need to, and, and Carmel, you'll like this. I think we need to define sustainable development so it's not automatically linked to higher-density development.
Thank you, because I do like that. Higher density, you know, more height, more people. No, I think, especially in the area that they're talking about, this, this area specifically says, I believe it specifically says, Montclair Center, which there's arguments to be made, and we've made the arguments here on this board, that the, the center is really saturated with development at this point. And, you know, we've reached, we've talked about it, have we reached a tipping point where we rare, we rarely want to stop all that intense development? And of course, now we're faced with a couple of projects that are going to be coming down the line, and how will we act to that, God knows. But I certainly don't think that the master plan should be saying that we need to promote eight-story buildings and with high density. And I know there will be people here who disagree with me, but, and there will be people here who agree with me. And certainly, you know, my ear to the community says that's not what the community seems to want. But, you know, what do I know? That's anecdotal.
I mean, I think that it's a good point, how, how we've reached a saturation point with the high-density development.
We have in certain neighborhoods. I think basically what we've done is we put all of the development. It's not, it's something that people want in the abstract, but the people who are living in those, those parts don't really want the overcrowding and the traffic and all the issues that come with it. And I do think that, that the master plan at the time that it was written has been met. The goal has been met and over exceeded in certain areas, and the rest of the community has resisted it successfully. So I, I really think that we need to relook at that.
I mean, this all started with the character of, I mean, Bloomfield Avenue is, is like the spine. The primary, the, the central business district, from day one, it had permitted buildings six stories in height. Not that they were always built that tall, but the zoning permitted it. So I think that kind of, that, that told the story as to how Bloomfield Avenue developed over time. You have a lot of four-story buildings on and near, near Bloomfield Avenue, you have some six and seven-story buildings. We've permitted eight, but the predominant character, and I think this is what's in the plan, the predominant character is, is, is no more than four stories interspersed with these taller, these taller nodes.
So just a fact question. Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Lackawanna to the side, in terms of what the master plan says now, where would the eight-story buildings go under the master plan with the eight-story encouragement as of now? What's left?
There's nothing left. It's in, that, that would be the gateway, you know, Valley and Bloom, and the hotel, and Seymour Street. That's basically it.
So, I mean, so that, that in and of itself is the reason to spike the eight-storiness, because there's no, there's no place left to put them, and even if people wanted them, which they don't. That, that was, so I just want, I mean, that's the, that's the thing, is that we, no, I, I, go ahead.
No, I mean, I, zoning has this fun power to, this fun inertial power to just keep things going the way they always were, right? And it's very good at preventing things. And so while naturally Bloomfield Avenue may have kind of slowly densified outwards, right, outwards from that spine, we use these tools to say, no, don't do that, right? And that encourages intensification of the use along the areas with the most resources, infrastructure, et cetera, right? And so that's Bloomfield Avenue, which has the train station and the grocery stores and the shops and the retail and all of that. And so the things got taller there because that's where people and things wanted to be. And just saying, stop, is not necessarily going to work because people and things will still want to be there because it is still that node.
I didn't say stop.
Oh, no, I, I, um, yeah. The infrastructure, right, is there, a very busy train line, multiple bus routes, a broad boulevard unlike any other street in town in like a very literal sense. And so I think rather than taking an infrastructure that is, needs some work, right, and saying we're just going to stop adding to it, rather than making that infrastructure work better, right? We've got a train station that sees maybe a dozen trains on a weekend day. It's kind of crazy, right? Like, it just sits there.
But that's a, that, the train, the train station, not the train line not working on the weekends is an entirely different problem that we can't solve.
It's one that we need to be part of the solution on, right? Like, they're not going to change that unless Montclair says we want to change.
It's nothing to do with Montclair saying anything. That's not, that is, that is a very not-Montclair problem.
It isn't, it isn't, right? Like, they're not going to send trains through Montclair if Montclair is not okay with it, because that's the reason they stopped sending, they, they don't send trains through Montclair. When they built MSU and the Montclair Connection, it was a delicate dance. And so, you know, I think to say that we are done developing in the area where we have the greatest amount of infrastructure and resources is a difficult thing and that should be done very lightly. But I also think if we are saying too much development is happening there, then we need to look at the other places with increased amounts of infrastructure, like the other train stations and the other business districts, and talk about intensifying uses there to offset the pressure that people are interpreting on the communities surrounding the areas that have already faced a lot of development.
So just two, two quick things in response. So first, I was reacting to the eight-story, 75-foot-ness that is in the current plan. I was asking, is there anything left for eight stories? Janice said no. I think that's right. And so Janice otherwise said that Bloomfield Avenue is, is up to six. It's usually four. And that's not stop. That's a, that's in and of itself a pretty significant ability to, to do things on Bloomfield Avenue going into the future. But I think it may be appropriate now to just kind of say no mas with respect to the eight-storiness. The other part of what you said is in a very interesting debate that we've had before, will have again, that I think is going to come up in the elections to come about whether Montclair, here I go, Arthur, white clancification. You know, whether, whether there is an appetite to have density around other train stations. I, I don't think there is an appetite for it. There might be some, there might not. But I think that for purposes of, of all I, all I was asking was whether, whether it's appropriate to continue to have language about eight stories in a master plan revision when we've, we've kind of been there, done that, and we may want to stop with that kind of height.
I think my general comments were interpreted as you comments, and it was really more, there'd been a lot of discussion around them. Deus.
Got it.
I'm not so sure we have the infrastructure.
Carol, I can't, I can't hear you. Yes, it's on. Just move it close.
I mean, when we save infrastructure, we have trains, and that's, that's nice to have, and I think that's a good asset. But we don't have the, the sewage, we don't have the waters, the, we don't have the infrastructure to support all of that. And that's why we've got problems and main breaks and whatever else going on. And I don't know that the board or the township has ever supported the eight-story buildings. And Bloomfield Avenue never had them in the past because they had parking requirements that restricted the ability to get it. And when we got creative and said things such as, well, we could share the parking, and businesses rushed to say, yes, that's a great idea, therefore we could have these buildings, we got into difficulty. And we're seeing some of that difficulty now. So I think that perhaps the idea of the eight stories was never really marketed well among the community itself. It was basically a, a, a plan written by the train stations. And I think that we bit off a little bit of something that didn't work out so well.
Towns need to develop and grow. Otherwise, they become stagnant and they die.
But how? That's the question.
A choice was made at one point, in addition to all the other things that we discussed, a choice was made and said, we want the development not to occur in the residential areas, which only leaves the commercial areas, which is where the train stations and where the businesses are.
Right.
So that's, you know, that's another factor that contributes into how all of this winds up, where it winds up. You know, what we've got to figure out, I guess, is how to manage it so that we have smart growth in a way that doesn't negatively impact.
Right.
The, the, the nature and the structure of what's here, you know? And then also to, to kind of figure out what needs to be done in order to support that smart growth, what changes have to be made, you know, I mean, yeah, we, we definitely need additions to, to infrastructure in terms of utilities and that sort of thing. But what other things, you know, do we need in order to, in order to encourage that, you know? And, and what can we recommend in terms of planning? You know, and, and, you know, our, our role in terms of the ordinances as to what can support that and how it can be encouraged? So it's a, it's, it's not, it's not an easy task.
Just wondering, how many, how many buildings of six stories have been built without a redevelopment plan? I think that the building that's on the corner of Leonard Avenue and Willow is five stories, that loft building. five stories, that loft building.
Right.
That, I think, was not a redevelopment plan. I think that was straight-up zoning. But I don't know if there's ever been a property built at that height.
Not in recent.
Well, I think, I think the property across the street behind where the Diva Lounge used to be, that, that tower was, would have been six stories if it had been built.
Is that going to be built, or what's going on with it?
That's a good question. I mean, you approved it. I don't know if, if, I've been, I haven't heard of what his timing is to build that.
And there's the other one, too, the Roseair Building.
We have, but the parking.
Yeah, right.
You know, again, that's, that's the thing, the parking is the thing that has kept the stories in check.
That's exactly right. And I think it's a good thing to find parking somewhere. I mean, I, I don't, I, I think that most of us at some point need to get to the buildings. And if we don't have anywhere to park our cars, I think it's a detriment to the business surviving. So, it, there's, there's something that, that, it's a companion thing. If you really do have to, if you're going to build the town, make it accessible to people who have cars, because otherwise they don't get here.
I'm also, like, concerned about the look of a neighborhood. So, if you look at Walnut Street, I mean, that kind of over time, in the eighteen years I've lived in the area, it went from kind of a little bit of a, a little bit of a rundown area, and then it naturally kind of grew with one store and then another store, kind of feeding on each other. And it's really nice, a nice kind of funky, different kinds of shops that are there. And then when you talk about maybe building, you know, a six or eight-story building and tearing down an historic structure nearby, to me, that's outrageous.
I don't think we ever talked about a six-story building.
No, 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 but it's, you know, well, whatever the story, the height is, we won't talk about stories, we really should be talking about footage.
Are you, are you talking about Walnut Street or Lackawanna?
Well, I'm talking about Labelle Street, the potential for that to be a large development.
Right.
And that is totally out of character with the area. So, isn't that something we need to be considering when we are, you know, looking at something like this? That we want the character of the neighborhood really does matter.
So, I've got a small note going back, and then I want to touch on what you said, Carmel. Somewhere in the reexamination report, it said we had talked about doing an infrastructure master plan component, and we never did, and I think the discussion up here says we probably should, and I think that'd be really valuable. So, just a note on that.
That subcommittee hasn't met yet.
And can I pick up on that? One of the things that, I mean, over this weekend, there was a tour by the Northeast Coalition of the, the Tonys Brook, and a lot of water issues were discussed, and that needs to be looked at.
That's a big one.
Because that's a big thing there, and it's, I don't see, we look at it piecemeal, but somebody needs to do an overall study, and what's going on with the, the underground culverts, the-
With the, with the what?
The water, the culverts, the Tonys Brook.
You know, it's interesting, they were all on private property.
Yeah. Well, I'm sure the private property owners would be happy to know that they-
And some of them are open.
Yeah, they're all over. But you can't just ignore it, you can't just address it piecemeal, because we're seeing the problems with it.
But we don't own it. That's, that's, we've been, we've been talking, how do you manage, I mean, we've been talking about that for a year and a half now. How do you, we don't own it. It's hard enough just to evaluate it to make sure it's getting, it gets cleaned up, but when you have, they're all under individual ownership.
Right. But if I were an owner, which I had that water running through my property, I'd want to know, I'd be happy if the Army Corps of Engineers came in and said, hey, this is what we-
They're not.
I know, I'm just, no, I'm just throwing that out there. If somebody came in and said, this is what you need to do to ensure that you're not gonna have eight feet of water in your basement the next time we have a hurricane, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, to touch on your Walnut Street comment, I think it's, it's interesting that you talked about Walnut Street developing naturally, because zoning then provides an unnatural cap on what any development would happen, right? So, I'm not saying a four-story or a six-story building is appropriate in that environment, but when you say a, a community cannot, or a section of town cannot have a building over thirty-six feet in height, right, that's an unnatural cap. And a developer who would have otherwise come in and said, I'm gonna build four stories, forty-eight feet, is not able to do that. And so, I think saying anything develops naturally in a world where everything is zoned is hard to, to follow through on.
Like, I think they're able to do it, it's just they would have to come before this board and prove why they, they deserve that extra height.
Yeah.
And I think that, you know, I think back to twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen, twenty-sixteen, when we were looking at all these issues, that was kind of what this board felt like. If, if we were to say, okay, let's cap it at four stories, if somebody has a really great idea and wants five or six stories, well, let's entertain it, but we get to do it here, almost like what Mr. Jacobson was saying, you know, at least we don't have to just accept it, we're able to ask the right questions and make sure that we are getting a benefit for what we would perceive as a detriment.
That's the incentive zoning, where you give additional height for other public benefits, which include additional open space, because we, there is no open space requirement, public open space, I should, I should say. Or, we've talked about sidewalk improvements, other improvements. We talked about, we, we sometimes have, this is not necessarily for additional height, we do, do car share. We had a couple of projects where they do have zip cars, they put them in, and they're there.
Are they there? I haven't heard of anybody using zipcar in agents.
That's one of the things I'd like to see, I'd like to see.
What happened with that?
Because I wondered about that, because we did have it in our regulations, and I, I've not, I've not seen it around much, so.
They were bought by some Avis or something?
Yeah, Avis budget group owns them.
Yeah, yeah.
I used to use them a lot.
Yeah. I mean, people in the city use them, but-
I used to use them a lot here.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah. And what happened? Where are they, anyway? Where are they located here in town?
The ones, the ones that we have, there's three of them in Valley and Bloom.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, it'd be interesting to get the statistics on the use of these zipcars.
I would love to see that, that would be very interesting to see.
But, yeah, we haven't, we haven't required that in a while. You know, we got rid of that as a requirement in, or as a, as a bonus for a, a parking variance, because it's really hard to manage.
So, there are some working at Valley and Bloom, and that's about it, or there are others elsewhere?
Right. That's the one where we, where we had the, gave them the, the variance, they got credit for the-
They got three.
For the zipcars.
Yeah.
But we didn't include that in the other ones. So, because again, it's, it's something else to manage, you know, to, to monitor. But again, if you want to have open space, if you're gonna require them to provide open space, you basically have to require an incentive for them to dedicate land for open space. And that was the, one of the things that we talked about in terms of incentive zoning. So, if you want them to, if we could, I'll, I'm not gonna talk about you too, infrastructure, that'll be a different discussion. But public, when you talk about what kind of public benefits you want to have in our business districts, what do you want to see? You know, what's missing? That's, the, the existing plan talks about public benefits for increased density. Right now, we, we can't say that an increase in density leads to more affordable housing, because our density itself right now requires it already. So, if you're already at fifty-five mi, units per acre, you already have a density that's high enough to support that affordable housing requirement. So, that's not a benefit from, that's, that's assigned to increased density.
Well, I think the benefit actually is keeping the buildings low and not increasing them for any, there's no benefit, in my view, to the public for having, you know, six-story buildings, tall buildings.
Well, I guess the only other thing is, you provide, you provide more housing. Now, is there, and we know that there's a demand for housing, if you want to provide more housing, that's basically the benefit. Or if you want to provide more office, you know, if we need more office use. I keep going back to when I started, when I moved to Montclair in the nineties, and we started, my husband and I got involved with the MEDC, the Montclair Economic Development Corporation. Montclair in the nineties was very different from what Montclair was today. And the, the push was, we have to bring uses to our downtown to make them vibrant business centers. People, we didn't have the amount of activity that we have now. We had very little, very few people living there, there wasn't that much office space. You had a lot of, you know, some good retail, some good restaurants, but a lot of marginal. I think we've accomplished what we wanted to accomplish when the MEDC first did their economic development, economic strategy for the downtown, which was to make it a place to live, work, and play twenty-four hours, have more people living there and working there, and then have the businesses to support them. I think we've accomplished that.
So, you're saying we're done? Is that what you're saying? We don't need to keep-
You're never done.
No, no, but we're done with the high buildings.
I think we've achieved that goal.
Yeah, yeah. So, we don't want to keep adding to it, because then it becomes not pleasant.
We don't want to become stagnant. We want to, and I think this is to Tony's point, we want to encourage continued reinvestment in our buildings. So, maybe the focus should be, and I think you make a good point, we adaptive reuse in these, investment in the buildings, and the ability to adaptively reuse our buildings for new uses that, you know, maybe weren't perceived before.
Yeah, and we seem to have some developers.
We need to have that ability, that flexibility.
And there, you know, there's three particular developers in town who are very good at that.
Right, and it doesn't have-
And it's great, and the George is great.
And it doesn't have to all be eight-story buildings.
Right.
It can be achieved through, you know, we have a lot of one-story buildings that could, where there's room for improvement. And if Tony made a good point, if we can encour, allow them to build up to two or three stories, to fix up the building, you know, provide, help provide for a more vital downtown, I think that would be a good thing. So, I wouldn't say, no, no more development. I think it's just be, let's, let's talk about the kind of development we want to see.
Yeah, the height, it's the particular issue.
Right.
The height and density.
Am I talking too much? I want to listen. I'm gonna stop talking, because I really want to listen to what you have to say.
Just a quick, quick question. When, in the memo page, too, you, you mentioned the Unified Plan. I brought a copy of Unified Plan that was amended in two thousand seventeen. Is that the reference, is that the latest one?
No.
That didn't want after that.
April tenth of this year.
No. Actually, March twenty-three.
It's twenty-twenty-three.
You got it here.
Is that this one?
Yeah.
Right?
Thank you.
I think I sent you all copies of the, the particular sections.
Yep. So, Janice, just to get back, though, to this recommendation, is your response going to exclude, the Unified Plan recommends that incentive zoning in the C-one activity node in the land use plan permit an increase in height of eight stories and seventy-five units per acre?
I think what I'm hearing from you, I mean, that's true.
That is true.
That we, that this has been achieved. The focus now needs to be on X. It's not, not necessarily higher, but encourage-
Adaptive reuse of existing buildings.
Adaptive reuse and continued investment
Yeah.
throughout the downtown in a manner that doesn't overwhelm the district.
Yeah, I like that concept of smart growth. And I think that's, and, and I don't know how to put that into a defined term.
Yeah, I don't know what that is.
And we can work on that.
I think we have to define it.
That's the key.
We have to define.
But it's like, you know, I, I like the idea of, if there's a one-story building and somebody wants to invest to make it a two or three-story, okay, you know, but is somebody gonna take a six-story building and make it eight? Probably not. I know, but how do we, how do we define that?
I think it's partly gonna have to be talked about in terms of height rather than in terms of stories.
Oh, definitely.
Because the idea that it's popular to make fifteen-story, of fifteen-foot ceilings is changing what we meant by six stories. So, I think we really do need to talk in terms of height rather than stories.
Absolutely.
I think it's both, really.
Why? Why does half they talk about stories?
Because I think that-
Well, I'm, I'm happy with, with talking heights and stories, but I think that the key is, is that the idea of calling a ninety-foot building six stories is kind of-
Right, a twenty-five-foot story is a little bit more than a story, is what you're trying to say. Yeah, and I agree.
I see, Carmel, I think you added, the committee noted that the south, is this your addition?
Yes, it is, yeah.
The committee noted that the south end of town is saturated with new development, and if development is encouraged at all, other areas in town like Wauchung Avenue and Upper Montclair should be under consideration.
A fat chance, right? I mean, I think it's, I think, I think perhaps a statement that new development should be encouraged in an appropriate manner throughout the town. Okay, not just... Number two, which was adopt a form-based code or a hybrid form-based code. I don't think that's ever gonna happen. I think we, for us to rewrite all of our development regulations in a form-based code would be a major effort. And I think we've achieved a lot of what is intended with the hy, with, with the form-based code with our current, our current regulatory environment, between the zoning and the land use and the Historic Preservation Commission and our redevelopment plans that have the stringent design standards. I think we've accomplished that. And I think to spend a lot of time and effort talking about form-based code, I don't, I just, I just don't think it's necessary.
I would agree. I also think the public doesn't know what it is.
Most people don't know what it is. It's, it's very, you have to hire special people to, to review plans that are submitted under form-based code. As do, property owners have to hire an architect who's, understands form-based code. So, the learning curve for the public and for the township, in addition to the expense, is steep.
So, you're gonna take that out?
I'd be curious to know if any communities in New Jersey have adopted form-based code.
Oh, yeah, Morristown.
Morristown?
Yeah.
Okay.
They have to hire a lot of specialists.
Yeah. It feels like a chicken and the egg problem, where since they're first, they're now having to
Yeah.
hire the specialists. There's not an environment in which it's easily available.
Number three, basically repeats what we've already talked about, utilize density bonuses to ensure public benefits. I, I don't know if we want to talk about density bonuses anymore unless there's some defined public benefits that we really need to get. So, I, I get the feeling that we want to get rid of that.
I'll just note that I don't want to get rid of that.
I know.
Number four, update zoning township, zoning township-wide to encourage walkable environments throughout the township by implementing the following changes, and this is a little silly, encouraging short to medium-length blocks. Those are already established. Perhaps maybe encourage alleys, mid-block, mid-block alleys would be more appropriate. But how do you do that in a-
That's a good question. I don't know how we do that.
Built out.
What?
I think we're pretty built out.
But when there's, I guess, if, when there's an opportunity, if you have a development that goes from street to street-
Like Lackawanna.
Yeah, yeah.
Or like the police station to-
Perhaps that's an opportunity, we should be able to put a mid-block connection.
Well, I think, and I think the, having a focus on the walkability automatically encompasses that, because, you know, we've seen, you know, like in, in the Lackawanna applications that we've seen, that has been taken into consideration without us expressly
Right.
you know, requiring that one. It's, it's more, it's, it's the walkability concept, however it might be taken, it might be, it might be an alley, it might be an overpass, it might be, you know, something else, but-
So, I think that we can probably condense this into a lot less. I mean, A is silly. B, require buildings front onto streets.
Yeah, of course we do that. We already do. C, establish strong building-street connections. I think we already do that. We have some new requirements that we adopted in two thousand twelve, I think, in the site plan ordinance and the HPC controls. In key commercial building districts, ensure that buildings contribute to a continuous succession of façades. This is where we talked about, we don't want a continuous street wall, a little, a little deviation adds some interest. Prohibit or discourage off-street parking from fronting onto, I mean, we already do that. We don't permit parking in the front yard. So, I think essentially this can be consolidated into one or two bullet points, because we've already achieved almost all of these items. Give developers incentives to provide their residents with alternatives to individual car ownership.
What kind of incentives are you envisioning there?
Car share services.
Dinner delivery.
I guess, we've included car share services through redevelopment as part of parking variances.
What? I'm sorry, what does that mean?
Car, that, that's basically, that was the basis for doing the car share in-
The zip car.
Yeah, the zip car.
Yeah, like for, for each zip car you bring, that counts for three parking spaces.
But we're not doing that anymore, right?
Yeah, no, it's very, because it's very hard to manage.
Yeah, yeah, it's, okay.
G, establish appropriate sidewalk widths. Again, that, where we had a discussion with, well, maybe a zero front yard setback is not appropriate.
So, how are you gonna reword that? What are you gonna say there?
Change the zero-foot front yard setback so that when a new building is built, it has to be moved back, back a little bit, so we get a little bit more open space area between the building and the street.
Or even like the type of entrance some older buildings have, where you have, I'm thinking about Bogart and Hanson.
They have the alcove? They have the alcove, that little alcove, things like that.
Or is it Madison Building has the same kind of thing? Some of those builds. So that, is that included in this description that you, you think that allows for that?
We don't really, we don't regulate the building alcoves.
Oh, okay, okay, so it's not just the setback.
We regulate the building line. And I think this comes out of, coming out of COVID, everybody wants to have outdoor dining and outdoor activity. If we provide wider sidewalks, it makes it easier to do that. Remember, we talked about, and this might not be, we had a whole parklet program. And the issue with parklets is.
Rats.
It may be, you had to be very careful, well, I know you rats. You'd be very careful where you locate the parklet. There's a lot of competing interests for our curb, the curb, what you do adjacent to the curb on our streets. So, maybe what we should do is provide more space in front of these buildings so that they can have the outdoor dining or outdoor activities that they want. The next one, the next recommendation, permitted uses should be defined according to generic categories and not specific exact retail types. Okay. Our, our categories are fairly general, they're not exact. Sometimes they're exact, because sometimes there's an issue, and so we specify specific uses. I tried doing tables for all of our zone districts and listing all those uses, and that didn't, that didn't get through the council approval, because it required reorganizing and rewriting a lot of our zoning code. So at this point, I, I think continuing to monitor our land uses and, and perhaps we, on an annual basis, we can evaluate the, the uses per district and see if they should be reworded, or new uses should be revised, added. But I don't think we need to really change the way we address our land uses, the way we define them.
So if I may, one of the problems one of my communities is facing is they, they have medical office use, which most do, but now they have an emergic care center.
Oh, yeah.
Is that a medical office use?
I classify that as a medical office use.
You would, but the parking is a different kind of parking.
They still have doctors and nurses and patients.
They didn't see it quite like that. Especially because it was in a shopping center. So, just, just bringing that to, to, bringing that up to point out that having generic categories may not always function well when you get into specific kinds of uses.
I'm not quite sure what you're, what you're saying, could you help me with that?
You'd see the CityMD.
Like urgent, more urgent care?
Right, I know that urgent care, but what is the difference between that and, I couldn't understand what you were saying, that was all.
So, this community found that there was a distinction between medical office use and emergent center.
What's the difference is what I couldn't understand.
They, they thought it was different. I don't necessarily agree with that. They thought it was a different use.
See, I.
And therefore may have a different parking requirement.
More people going to the emergence, emergency center.
Well, we already have a very high parking requirement for medical office. The hi- one of the highest is one per one-fifty. So for them to be considered, if somebody wanted to come in with a storefront, CityMD, whatever it's called, storefront emergent center, they would, the way we would apply it is that the medical office parking ratio, one space per one-hundred-and-fifty square feet would apply. Whereas if it's classified as a retail, it would be five per thousand. So that's, that's a slightly lesser parking requirement.
With as hard as it is to get an appointment at a doctor's office, I can't imagine that an emergent care center is more busy than the doctor's office.
I mean, people wait, that's what I would think.
Because it takes, it, I don't know, my personal experience, it takes months sometimes to get a, to get an appointment, to get in to see a doctor. Because they don't have, they don't have, and then they double-book the appointments.
Right.
So you're sitting there waiting, you know, I mean, could, is an emergence care center much busier than that?
I think of it like in a, an emergency room, more or less.
Well, also think about, think about when COVID testing was all the rage and people were lined up around the block.
That's different.
Well, except, except, except if you're Morristown, you're thinking about all the lines around the block at that. And so, i- it's episodic, but I can understand why.
Yeah.
Right, so I, I think we have a, we, we, when our definition of medical office has one of the most stringent parking requirements. So, if they want to come in, first of all, we don't permit office on the first floor. In our, in our, that's the bigger issue. If they want to come in, there's, not only is there parking, but they have to, we don't permit office on the first floor. Now, they have come before me and said, "Well, you know, we make it look like a storefront, we have open windows." I said, "Okay, then, you know, you go for a variance." Because traditional medical offices, you know, are kind of closed off. And that's why they're, we have them on the upper floors.
They'll sell you marijuana on the first floor all day long. The doctor's office is new.
Yeah.
So, but that was a good point.
I think that's item I that we're coming to here.
That's, that's my item.
Yeah. I, cannabis, because the one new use that I, I, we identified in here are the cannabis uses. And right now, we treat them as a retail use. My, I think my recommendation was to monitor it. I don't have a feel for how it, how these uses are working in our downtown, because it's a new use. So, yeah.
So I, I understand that there may be more licenses coming down the pike. So my point in I there is to make sure that they're not all concentrated on the, in the south end of town again. That the council should spread them out.
Yeah.
Right? I know we don't like them, but.
Good luck.
On the other, that really, to me, seems outrageous.
So everybody should have their cannabis retailer in close proximity to where they live, right?
Well, I think it's only fair, it's like a social justice issue in my view, not to have cannabis, which some people don't like, just in a certain section of town. It's wrong. And I don't know, I mean, I, I know the council is thinking about more licenses, because what did I hear? That Ascend pays them, what, sixty thousand dollars a quarter in taxes? So they're very happy with that amount of money. And anyway, I would like to include something like that.
We have, the next one, ensure that high-quality pedestrian amenities are used and support access for all. This is where I, we said the pilot program for parklets. The problem with parklets, it takes up valuable curbside space, which is increasingly needed for deliveries and short-term parking. More benches. I make, we make, I make a recommendation that we provide more benches, because I hear that argument a lot, that there's not enough benches for people to, to sit in our downtown. So unless there's something else that somebody wants to.
Wayfaring.
Wayfaring.
Wayfaring. And it's connected with the parking tube. I mean, I've noticed.
You mean wayfinding?
Wayfinding, yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but I, I wonder about that. So you see those wayfinding signs all over town, but nobody uses them anymore.
Because you can't, because you don't know what they mean.
And you have.
They're too small.
But people have phones.
Some of them are too small.
Yeah.
You don't know what they mean.
Right.
You know, they, so it's, so you have to go to your phone.
I think they're a waste of money, quite honestly.
It was not designed well. You can do wayfinding with really good symbols that are easy to understand, that are used.
Throughout the world.
Throughout, throughout a, a, a community.
Yeah, like.
Ours is not, and you're right, they're too small.
I saw a sign, I was on Pine Street, I saw a sign on the corner of Pine and Glen Ridge, it said, "Parking this way." And I know the parking is, the closest parking that way was the, the new deck, you know? And it's like, that's like, it's not a close distance. You know, it's like, it's not local parking. In the meantime, the parking deck for the train station.
It's right there.
Was right down the next block, there was no sign pointing to parking that way.
Right.
And you can't even get to the deck from Glen Ridge Ave. going that way. You have to go around the block now.
Yeah, and that's very bad for the.
So I just, I, I was, you know, just things like, I, the ones on Bloomfield Avenue, the nice signs, they're good for pedestrians. But, but you're, if you're in your car, you're just, you know, out of luck.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
I really think that's really important. We, we kind of joke about it, but I think the whole idea that you have to hide parking and let people, only the people who know where it is find it is very bad for business.
You're absolutely right. And we, we've, we spent a lot of time talking about it, but we haven't come up with a solution yet.
Well, I think we really ought to take that seriously, and we haven't yet.
So I know that.
Parking utility, that's supposed to think about.
That made lots of money.
And it's just not bad for business. It's also, you don't want people circling around, because it's bad for pollution and residents.
Parking signs that tell you which way to go and how, you know, where the spaces are available. So, there's been a lot of talk about that. And I think that we can just reinforce that we need to have a, a good parking signage program and wayfinding program.
I think on the topic of parklets, just going back to that real quick. I think a kind of similar end goal that could be valuable is that when you're daylighting an intersection, so as, as the township seems to be moving more towards a vision-zero sort of perspective.
I don't know what daylighting in an intersection is.
Um, making sure that the corners closest to the intersection are clear so that you can see pedestrians and other traffic coming. So rather than having cars right up along the corner.
Sight distance.
Exactly.
So pushing the, the parking away.
From the intersection.
Okay.
And so where you do that, just some planters and, and, and growth there both allows rainwater to be caught and captured and provides that daylighting. So kind of incorporating those principles into the parklet idea or, could be a helpful kind of crossover.
Okay.
And I did add that about rodents in the parklets, because it's absolutely true. If you read anything about Manhattan, they have all those parklets that are creating a rodent problem, more of a rodent problem, I should say, so.
And Janice, do we have a, on that same topic, I know we regulate the, the height of fences. Do we regulate the height of shrubbery?
We do. Code enforcement will go after you if your shrubbery in a site triangle is more than three feet.
Yeah, I got a few.
They've gotten after me on that.
Because it's, there's a lot of intersections in town where it's just really hard to see when you get to the corner.
Right.
Because the bushes are just too high.
Yeah, no, we do, we, it's in the, it's in the property maintenance code. And you could get ticketed for that. So if there's anything that's particularly problematic, let, you know, let me know, and I'll let code enforcement know. They'll follow up on that. Where was I?
J.
J. Conduct, all right, conduct a township-wide comprehensive parking study to consider revising minimum parking requirements. We did that. It was, we did that, it was comprehensive, spent close to a hundred thousand dollars in 2016. And some of those, some of the recommendations were, were taken, but not all of them. Perhaps what we need to do is another comprehensive parking, update it.
Or revisit it. At least start out with revisiting it.
And that's part of the parking analysis overall, you know?
Exactly. Okay? And the last one, ensure that well-marked and well-lit crosswalks are provided throughout the township. I think the township's been pretty good about adding flashing beacons where necessary, improving the, the mid-block crosswalks on Bloomfield Avenue in particular, adding lights.
Well, I was gonna say adding lights to the parking deck. We, we talked about that in one of our committees, I forget which one it was. Because they're really uninviting for the female coming home at night to get your car in a ill-lit parking deck.
I know there's movement in that direction.
Yeah, and they're also dirty.
To address those issues.
Yeah, yeah.
So I know we've already talked about this. Number five is implement shared parking and other parking management tools. I think we talked about that, we got the updated information. I have some, some data in here. The COVID, about COVID-nineteen and the work-life balance and what, you know, latest reports say about people with the percentage of office workers that have gone back to the office, either hybrid or full-time. But again, this is, like you said, it's constantly changing. We don't know where we're gonna end up. We have the parking deck occupancy data. It just shows that it's down, not surprisingly. That's the Bay Street Deck, the Crescent Deck, and the Midtown Deck, those are the ones that are operated by the township. And.
What about the North Fullerton? That's not operated by the township?
What?
North Fullerton Deck is not operated by the township?
It is, but I didn't get data for North Fullerton.
Could you tell me the status of the Orange Road parking deck? What's happening there? Across from Hills.
I know, I know, I know which one you're talking about. I, I had correspondence recently from the developer. They've had to fire their contractor for various reasons. And I think, yeah, I, they, they wanted to change the material on the facade because the new contractor would have to order special material. You know, we, we want, they're gonna, they have to put metal panels at the top, and instead of that, they wanted to put the stucco panels. The revisions committee said, "No, you gotta do the metal panels." So they said, "Okay, but it's gonna take us an extra five months to order the materials and get it done." So, it's, it's happening slowly but surely, is all I can say. I get reports every couple of months on the latest issue, on why it's taking so long for them to complete that facade.
How many cars are they gonna park up there? Because all the idea of adding these different mechanical things that we're gonna let them stack cars, that's, that's completely out now, right?
Well, there's no mechanical, but I think they, they did come for approval for the, they're expanding them. Expanding the, the, the pad to the facade, and that was part of the approval.
So how many cars are they gonna park in the end without all of the?
I don't, I don't know offhand. Again, that's also a private parking deck. So I, I get data from them, and that's where I'll ask for Level G to evaluate the data and, and perhaps do quarterly or annual reports to the planning board. Because he understands the data much better than I do. It, to me, it's just data.
And Janice, just, so it doesn't raise any questions, I, I might add the other decks to this table.
Which decks?
The North Fullerton and the Orange Road, just, people looking at this.
Well, we don't own the Orange Road.
But we still, we still should know something about the parking ability of the owners.
Right, okay, I can't, it's not, I think, I can call the parking utility and get the data.
Right.
It's different when we have.
Private owner, yeah.
Private owners. So that's what I'm saying, I will.
You'll try, yeah.
I will ask, it doesn't, it's really, it's meaningless to me if you want to know how it's being utilized in terms of how many uses are approved to use that deck. That's what he does. And I'd much rather have him report to you than.
I'm just saying that I think it, just you should mention those two decks are infro-not-available. Or some, some people who are looking at this will say, "Well, what about those other decks?"
Okay. Well, there's a lot of decks that are privately owned that we really don't, I was trying to focus on the township decks.
What other decks are there?
South Willow.
South Willow.
The one next to the Wilma?
Yeah, 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 okay.
Yeah.
Maybe just change the title of the table, so it's publicly owned.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Parking deck occupancy.
But South Willow allows public parking there.
There's some public parking in them, there's, there's public parking in all of them, but they're privately managed. They're private, they're, we don't own those decks.
I got, I got you, yeah.
So I think we already talked about that. Adjusted the, the whole shared parking. I don't think we need to talk about that again. But moving on to item number six, adjust parking requirements. I think we talked about that as well. I think that there's disagreement. This, we, the township adjusted the parking requirements to eliminate the, the ability for expansions in the C-one and C-three zones to be exempt from parking. So there's no longer those parking exemptions. And I guess it's up for debate as to whether or not, maybe reconsider those parking exemptions for adaptive reuse of existing buildings. So that's what, I think that's what I heard from the board members, that reconsidering that, that exemption. Which would allow them to, to get a more parking-intensive use without requiring a parking variance. Anyway.
Janice, I, I had made the suggestion that you might want to just reference the ordinance there. So if we really want to get in the weeds here, we'll know what the ordinance says. I'm just curious.
You want, well, it's no longer in the ordinance, but I can say where it used to be.
Oh.
We already took it out.
Yeah, yeah, but, I mean, I'd like to know exactly, a little bit more details on this. So where do I find that?
Absolutely, I can give, I can tell you what the, exactly what it said.
Okay.
And what we took out.
Yeah.
Okay? Optimize the public parking inventory. I think this would be part of a, the parking management plan that we talked about. In evaluating the Lackawanna Plaza project, I got some parking information from BDP Holdings. in evaluating the Lacawanna Plaza project. I got some parking information from BDP Holdings. It would, and I, I don't think that it's enough for us to make any recommendations on. I think it just, I shared the findings from their report with you. I shared Jerry's comments, Jerry Geos's comments on that report with you. I think at the end of the day, it, because parking is so important, I think we need to have, like you said, a more ongoing professional discussion on parking.
The observation that double parking is a significant problem around restaurants, et cetera, is absolutely right. The recommendation to have more loading zones and redesign things is maybe less right. Because I, I, I mean, we've got a significant enforcement problem.
You're right.
And, and we're going to have, and, and until we solve that, it, it doesn't matter how many spots we, you know, if we, if we create a loading zone spot and people park there and stay there longer, we're going to have still double parking, still more of enforcement problems. So, in other words, I, I don't, it, it's a problem for which we need to solve. I just don't know that the solution that you've got in here is the right one necessarily.
I think what we really want to do is we want to, it's right, and we actually expand upon this more in the report on the Traffic and Circulation Subcommittee, which is meeting this week, has a lot more information on that. It's true, the double parking has, is, I think, we all agree, it's become a more of a-
It's, it's so bad that our first responders aren't allowed to use Bloomfield Ave. for odd calls.
It's a huge problem.
Yeah.
We don't know what the solution is. This was one solution to provide, I think what we need to do is get the people who are parking all day in those, in those spots, right in front of their, their stores. Those parking spaces should be, short-term parking. We want them, people to, to park and leave so that they're, it's more convenient. You can use those for deliveries, you can use those for people who are picking up things to be delivered or being delivered to their, to the stores and not being used for all-day parking, which is part of the problem.
Yeah.
I, I, like I said, the, the observation is right. I don't know that we're yet in a position where we should be prescribing recommendations because I don't think there's a, necessarily a one-size-fits-all solution. But there does need to be, I think, I think we need to see what it looks like to have more enforcement first and then see what's missing and then solve for that.
And we talked about that. Well, I think we, my, the Subcommittee talked about it a lot. Enforcement's a huge issue and it's, it's kind of beyond our ability to address it at the planning board. But things like, if, if we could do, get more traffic cameras out there, if we were allowed to issue tickets in New Jersey using, using cameras, it would make enforcement a lot easier.
I wasn't, I wasn't advocating for that, but I mean, but, but-
That's what New York City, evidently, there, did you read the New York Times article this, today about the effect of the traffic cameras in New York City and how it's reduced traffic speeds? And how much money it's collected? Excellent article, you can check it out.
I'm with, I'm with Dec Leno's campaign on this one. But I'm just, but I, I think, you know, like I said, I think that we need to see what it looks like if people are actually shooed away. I mean, again, we need to, it, it is a very important perk for our, for our restaurants that they participate in these services and it's great and it's a boon for all concerned, except for the fact that there's no place to put the cars when the people go in and the drivers are abusing the privilege that we're giving them of double parking.
Right.
And it, we just need to see what it looks like.
And then you also have the trucks that can't, the delivery vehicles
Yeah.
Who have no place to park and they're the ones who are blocking the lanes as well. I mean, I think it's a big problem.
Yeah.
So, I think that that's it for, unless we have any more comments on parking and land uses.
I would like to suggest we not move on to the overly worded housing thing.
Why don't we save that for another meeting?
Save that for another meeting and let John do whatever John wants to do by way of the other thing he wanted to raise and then we can talk about indemnification and then call it a-
Call it a night?
That would be my suggestion.
Second.
Say aye, all right.
All right.
So, you all recently got an email from a member of the public. And it's not the first email that we've gotten from this member of the public. And, and you know, it's not the first time that we've gotten emails from members of the public. I just wanted to put out there that we have a process here when we're, when we're considering matters about how we receive information. And sending emails and texting comments and whatever other smoke signals come out outside of the process of our hearings in our public, in this public forum, are not part of the process. And while I guess we can't step on people's First Amendment rights, I would encourage all of you to not participate in reviewing these unsolicited opinions, information, whatever, however you want to characterize it. You know, when it's pertaining to, to the business of the board. You know, it's one thing if your friend is writing you and telling you something. It's another if a perfect stranger is sending you something or somebody who you're not a friend of, but you know, you know them because of whatever circumstance. You know, we should be receiving information, you know, as intended by the municipal land use law and the procedures that, you know, have been adopted for us to consider information. And I don't know, I've, I've just been noticing a number of things coming through in recent months. And today's example was, was, for me, it was kind of over the top. So, I'm putting it out there for you. I'm not naming names, I'm not, you know, putting people on the spot. But I would like to just remind everybody that, that we have a process here, that we're supposed to be following. And, you know, these, you know, ad hoc communications are just not part of it and they shouldn't be part of it. And they don't sit well with me. And that's all I wanted to say. And I'm not calling for any reaction or any opinion from any of you. Like I said, I'm just putting it out there and telling you how I feel about it. And I hope all of you will just use your best judgment. Carmel, you want to talk about the indemnification?
No, of course, I was wondering if you've heard anything from Mr. Burr.
From?
Mr. Burr.
I never sent the letter.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought that you did. Excuse me.
No, the letter was to be discussed by the board.
Oh, oh, okay.
And so, if the board says to me, "Arthur, send the letter," I'll send it out tomorrow.
I misunderstood that. Well, I think you should send the letter.
Very well stated, actually.
Yeah.
I think you all got, everyone got my proposed letter in your packet, so.
Yes.
That was very well stated.
I'll do whatever you need me to do.
Anybody have a problem with Arthur sending the letter?
He should have sent it sooner.
By all means, send it out.
I'll take care of it tomorrow.
All right. All right, does anybody else have any business that they wish to address this evening? If not, I'll move, what, do we have a?
Yep, that's going to be the other thing. I reviewed the bills and I would move to approve them.
Are mine in there?
Yes.
Good, good, thank you.
Janice, I have a question. Are we, are we, do we have a light agendas going forward with respect to applications? So, that we'll be able to focus?
Did Janice say that there aren't any applications pending and it's really light?
We have one coming up. We have one coming up the next meeting, but nothing, nothing huge.
Okay, thank you.
At least in the near term.
Thank you.
Okay? Is your second, second on paying the bills?
I seconded the bills.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
My firm and I appreciate that, thank you.
You're welcome.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Okay.
All right, thank you, everyone.